And we're going to start recording. So CUNY TV.
Recording in progress.
We are going to go live. We're now in public session, except our live transcript is not working. There we go. Okay. Members of the Board of Trustees. Please respond present when you hear your name. Kevin, can you hear me? You were doing the roll call. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, you you went into a muffled sound for a little bit, but.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay. Trustee Mojica was here and had to go. Trustee O'Donnell Tormi.
Present.
Great. Trustee Berger.
Present.
Professor Benton.
Present.
Professor Vazani.
Present.
Sarah Ortiz. No. I don't see her. Alfonso. No, okay, but Giovanni, trustee Pocantis here. Hi, Giovanni. We have a quorum. So this public meeting of the Committee on Audit is order. On March 7, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202 declaring it's an emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1, which included a suspension of law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law, to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in public, in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by their service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with the executive order, the board meeting is being held via video conference with a livestream founded at the CUNY Board. We're also testing a closed captioning feature, which you can see on the bottom of the screen. A copy of the calendar is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute your audio so we can ensure that everyone can hear. And we'll now take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery and other invited guests. Members of the Chancellery and other invited guests, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Felix Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice.
Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza.
Present.
President Michelle Anderson.
President.
Present when you hear your name. Great. Christina Chiappa, Deputy Chief Financial Officer. Did we lose Christina's on mute? Oh, I'm sorry.
Present.
That's okay. Sarah Montero, University Executive Controller.
Present.
Great. Claire Esten, Partner at Grant Thornton.
Present.
Becken. She's joined by her colleagues Chris Atkinson and Jenny Rowe, who I see both of you.
Present.
Okay, so it's all you, Kevin.
Thank you, Gail. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all the board members are participating remotely via Zoom and we cannot see everyone at once on the screen, I will announce the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're if you are voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote accordingly. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. We will take up the following items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the May 4, 2021 meeting. I move for the approval of policy item 1A. Do I have a second?
Ergo, second.
Thank you. Any discussions on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the vote has been passed unanimously. We'd like to now address action item 1B1, the policy calendar. Item 1B1 is a resolution for the approval of the fiscal year 2021 external audit plan. The university is required to have its financial statements and federal programs audited by a qualified independent third-party auditor every year. The university's external auditor, Grant Thornton LLP, meets with the university management and those charged with governance to review and discuss the proposed audit plan, including the scope, approach, and timing. The university is seeking the Audit Committee's approval of the fiscal year 2021 external audit plan, as will be presented by Grant Thornton LLP. I'll now turn the floor over to Senior Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza to provide some background on the item and then he'll turn it over to a brief presentation by Claire Esten, Partner at Grant Thornton. Matt?
Thanks so much, Chair Kim. Good evening, everyone. As the chairman said when introducing this item as part of the activities regarding our year-end financials and part of the Audit Committee's charter is to approve the external audit plan by our external audit firm. And so we're getting ready to start the activities for fiscal year 21. Our fiscal year ends on June 30. We have until October 31 to complete our year-end financials and so Grant Thornton, good colleagues from Grant Thornton are here this evening to walk us through the external plan for both that and for the Uniform Guidance Audit. And then we'll ask the Audit Committee to to consider it. So with that, I'm going to turn over to to my good colleague Claire Esten from Grant Thornton.
All right, great.
I also just want to say that Richard White has joined us, Vice Chancellor for Risk, Audit, and Compliance.
And can everybody see my screen with the slide deck? Okay, so it's it's nice to to be here with you all kicking off the FY21 audit. It was only a couple of weeks ago that we finished the FY20 audit. We let management have a little bit of a break from us, but not too long before we started talking about what's going on in fiscal 21 that would be important for us to know about as we evaluate where we're going to focus our our attention and and perform a risk assessment on the related to the FY21 audit. So the the comments that we're making today are a culmination of efforts between ourselves and management where we've we've been talking about what's going on, what's new that's going to change our audit approach and how it will impact the the areas of focus. We are going to be brief, knowing that probably a lot of people have had a long day already and you did have the materials ahead of time. And frankly, there's a lot of things that are in the the material that are similar in nature from year to year in terms of the areas of focus. So we wouldn't we we wouldn't need to go through each of those individually. However, if there's something that we're not mentioning that is in the in the materials that you would like us to elaborate on or you have questions on, please feel free to interrupt us at any time. No problem with that. So with that said, just talking quickly about the timetable. Matt mentioned that we have until October 31 to finalize the audit on the financial statements and that is the plan. This year, this FY20 again was a little different because of the additional time that was necessary to evaluate how some of the federal re federal relief programs were going to be reflected in FY20 and some of it in FY21. So there was a bit of a delay in the issuance of those financial statements, but this year we would expect to go back to the normal timetable. So we will issue the report on the financial statements end of October or soon thereafter, essentially whenever we meet with the with this committee again to present our results. And then we'll follow with the issuance of the Uniform Guidance Audit soon thereafter. That one is technically due March 31, so we have a little bit more time, but I think we'll try to issue it sooner than that. I'm going to ask Jenny, one of my colleagues, she's an audit manager here at Grant Thornton and she's been on the team with me for since we started working with you. She's going to cover just a few of the areas of focus.
Thank you, Claire. The next three slides would list the areas of focus in the respective plan approach as a result of our risk assessment process. Most of the areas that we have identified in the plan approaches here were the same as last year's, but I'd like to highlight a few items for the board. First would be the federal grants. For this year, we'll be focusing on the HERF program, primarily determining whether revenues from Rounds 1, 2, and/or 3, if any, as of 6/30, would were recognized properly. Another area to highlight would be in our next slide. The bottom, adoption of the new GASP standard, the GASP 84 fiduciary activities. For this area of focus, we are planning on testing management's analysis in determining whether there is a fiduciary activity and whether additional disclosures are needed, if there were any identified. Again, the rest of the areas included, including those within the third and final slide of this section were the same as last year's, but please let us know if there are other areas or accounts the board would like the audit team look into more detail for this year.
Jenny, can you, for the sake of everyone watching and also possibly for some of the student trustees who, you know, haven't been here in previous years, can you just let everyone know what HERF stands for?
Oh, yep. HERF stands for Higher Education Emergency Fund. So this would be the coronavirus response and really supplement appropriations that was some acting on 2021 or for 2021.
Thank you.
So if there are no other questions on the areas of significant focus in the audit process, and again, this is this is always evolving. This is our plan as of now, but as we learn more about how the year is unfolding and see some preliminary numbers, we may adjust our plan. We also always try to involve some level of unpredictability in the audit process to keep management on their toes. That's part of our professional responsibility is to incorporate that unpredictability into the audit. But if if something arises after this meeting and and you feel the need to to bring our attention to something, we welcome your feedback. Just very quickly, as part of the annual audit, we do evaluate IT general controls focused on the key financial reporting system of CUNY, CUNY First. So some of our IT auditors who are specialists working with with IT systems for nonprofit organizations will or actually already have started the process of interviews and testing of operational effectiveness around certain IT key controls. So that's all in process and we'll be able to update the committee the results of that. Our intention is to kind of finish that early on and hopefully be able to update the committee, I think, at the September meeting on the IT results. And then Chris is Chris Atkinson, who is a senior manager in our practice, in our higher ed practice, is going to talk just briefly about uniform guidance. So we're transitioning from the financial statement audit plan to the plan for the Uniform Guidance Audit or Federal Funds Audit. So Chris.
All right. Thank you, Claire, and good afternoon, everyone. So as many of you are aware, in addition to that financial statement audit that we do, we also perform a compliance audit in accordance with the Uniform Guidance because the university expends more than $750,000 annually in federal funding. Until last year, nearly all of that funding fell under the umbrella of the Student Financial Assistance Cluster. And then last year was a bit of an anomaly because CUNY actually received and expended a significant amount of that HERF funding that Jenny mentioned earlier, which required a compliance audit of both the SFA funding and also of the HERF funding. Now, because CUNY is considered a low-risk audittee, we have to obtain 20% testing coverage on the amounts of federal dollars expended during the year. And we've been working with management on a preliminary assessment of your schedule of expenditures of federal awards or your CIFA. And we believe we're going to be able to eclipse that 20% threshold with the HERF funding for fiscal year 21 and will likely only have to select that as a major program for testing and not student financial assistance. Claire, on the next slide, please. So on this slide, just discusses some of the areas of focus in a uniform guidance audit, which I like to think is just as difficult or even more difficult than your financial statement audit because it's dealing with compliance. So you're either in compliance or you're not, or you submitted your report timely or you did not. Sample sizes for these audits tend to be around 40 items from both a controls and a compliance perspective. And for each direct material compliance requirement, for HERF, it's going to be focusing mostly on allowability of expenditures that are charged to the grant. And that could be grants made to students. It could be payroll costs or other institutional expenses. It could be reporting to ensure that information that's reported out to the public is both timely and accurate. There's a matching component and also procurement to ensure that the university goes down the appropriate channels for purchases. We also reconcile all the totals back to the schedule of expenditures of federal awards and then we'll prepare and upload the final reports to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse. Does anybody have any questions on the Uniform Guidance Audit? Okay, excellent. I'll pass it back over to Claire.
Thank you. And and I will just elaborate. I went back to this other slide where it is it is kind of unique this year that we're not testing student financial aid, but it's highly likely that we will test student financial aid again next year in 2022. So it's not as though there's going to be an extended period of time where we're not testing that program. And that that program is significant to the the university system as a whole, but because of the way the formula works where the federal government allows us to, as long as we obtain 20% coverage of your total expenditures, which in this case is we just have to test more than $220 million. And it's expected that HERF 1, 2, and 3 will eclipse that amount. So we'll be all set. So that concludes our formal remarks. Again, there were a few other slides in here, but it was more informational. So I guess I would turn it back to Chair Kim to proceed with the vote or entertain any other questions.
Claire, can you just verify to for everyone's certification purposes too? You said you expect HERF to reach the 20% threshold that's required to qualify to be a program that gets audited under the Uniform Guidance Program, but what happens if we don't hit the 20%?
If the if the the math doesn't work that you don't reach that that the amount expended on HERF 1, 2, and 3 in fiscal 21 is less than 20%, then we would also have to test student financial aid. We would have to add that as a second major program and test that.
But the expectation is that that's a very low likelihood that we won't hit the 20% with HERF, correct?
That's correct. And and management has done sort of multiple iterations of projections on those numbers. And at a high level, the numbers, it's a combination. HERF is getting above 20% in the in the projections because of a combination of the fact that there is you are getting a significant amount of money from the Department of Ed, which is great, that you're getting so much money from them and you're able to turn it around and spend it very quickly, especially the distributions to students, which is what the Department of Ed wanted. There was a lot of a lot of incentive to pass that through the system as quickly as possible. So it's a combination of that, reaching a high dollar mark with the HERF funding, but also because of some declines in enrollment and resulting and associated declines in Pell, which is in the Student Financial Aid Program. Your denominator is lower and and student financial aid as a portion of the whole of the whole schedule of federal awards expenditures is smaller as well. So it's it's kind of those two things in opposite directions that are creating the opportunity for more than 20% to be HERF, but there's a big asterix to say we got to wait for the final numbers and do the math to make sure we're getting 20%, at least 20%.
Yeah. Do you mind closing out Claire's screen so I could see everyone? Otherwise.
Claire, Claire can do that. Go ahead, Claire, if you want to just stop sharing.
Okay, I'll see if I can do that.
There you go.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Before I do entertain the questions, one thing I did learn through this process was that. So another requirement under the Uniform Guidance is that you have to test a program once every three years, correct? And we've done the SFA, the Student Financial Aid, two years. And so by virtue of us skipping this year, we're still in compliance with the Uniform Guidance rules. And the HERF isn't expected to be given out again next year, right? So it probably won't be a program that's going to be there. So that given the unique situation and and the brief discussion I had or lengthy discussion we had about this with the with the SFA, we're still going to do some sort of testing with eligibility and verification, which are the two biggest risk factors in the SFA program anyway, just to not leave it be. And and the final point to be made is that all the colleges, anyway, assume that SFA was going to get tested like it has been for every year since, you know, anyone can remember. And so everybody was operating under the assumption that this was going to be the category that gets audited. But then this year, because of the unique circumstances, we thought that going with the HERF program made more sense. So now I'll open it up to questions from committee members and anyone else. Yes, Professor Benton?
Thank you. I have a general question. It's sort of in the category of of your risk assessment and your audit as it relates to the risk assessment. And I think of if you were assessing my home for risk of fire and the house was on fire, I would expect you might notice it. And I mean, this year is a remarkable year. And I noticed that, for example, you're you're looking at this, the new the new GASP 84, and it deals with our related entities. And we've had our related entities entered into arrangements about dormitories that didn't work out and they became, you know, they they went underwater. And the federal funds are rescuing them because of things. And the federal funds that are rescuing them are funds that would otherwise be available to the campuses for other purposes, but we're choosing to, you know. Anyway, it seems to me that there's a connection and a story here that would be relevant to hear from you about at some point. Similarly, the IT situation is one where, you know, like we're about to use CUNY First to send out $239 million worth of payments to students. And, you know, and yet we are in a world in which the systems are, you know, like the the oil pipeline company, suddenly, you know, their system's gone and and and, you know, it's it's a risk that is of 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 concern. And and then we also have the problems of enrollments that we're trying to manage, particularly in the community colleges and revenues. And I just wonder, I know that there's a core job that you have to do that relates to the particular rules that you're assessing compliance with and the particular regulations. But I just wonder how the unusual circumstances of this year affect your perspective and how you might look at things and what your your experts might 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 see that might help us.
So thank you for the the, I'll say, multiple questions and commentary. I would say I think you summarized it quite quite well in terms of the different unique circumstances that CUNY finds themselves in this year and and how it translates into what's in the financial statements. And some of it, some of it directly translates into what's in the financial statements and some of it is a little bit more sort of an environmental risk that has an impact, but doesn't necessarily go right into the financial statements. For example, the the enrollment declines. Obviously, your revenues will will reflect enrollment declines, but there's more to that risk than just properly stating revenue or or making sure that it's correct. So all of all of those things that they the you also mentioned the dorms. And that's something, actually, I've had a couple of conversations with Matt about and Christina and Sarah. We've had a few conversations about that situation in particular and how it it might impact the financial statements differently than it has in the past. And that's definitely an interesting topic and one that requires quite a bit of judgment on behalf of management to make sure that they're presenting that correctly. The relationship and the the risk associated with that relationship correctly in the financial statement. So it is certainly something that that we'll spend some time on. So all of those things are incorporated into the into the audit plan in one way or the other. Some things, just because they're so material from an absolute dollar perspective, are always going to be areas of focus, even if there's nothing particularly unique going on in a given year. So any IT is always an area of focus for us. And yes, the the fact that you've got such a deluge of payments going through CUNY First in the next couple of weeks and and you've already had a lot of payments, it's certainly a heightened risk, but frankly, there's a there's always a lot of transactions going through CUNY First that that are critical and and need to you need to make sure that you've got the right protocols in place around security, cyber cyber risk, all of those things that you would worry about with such a mission-critical system that you have. So that's that's all kind of part of what we think about, what we talk about, what we plan for and and what we incorporate into our audit plan.
Are you going to be looking at those cyber risk kinds of questions as you assess our IT and our operations?
We do. We have a specific sort of protocol around cybersecurity and making inquiries of management, sort of multiple different contacts within the the team at CUNY to understand what are the policies in place, what kind of training do you do, what what protections do you have, what insurance? There's a whole series of of questions that we ask and and we ask for evidence of all of that as well around cybersecurity.
Feel of confidence in the people that lead the university and that are are leading and managing our our IT infrastructure. But this situation that the nation faces and the governments in the nation face and the universities in the nation face is horrific. And and so it is reassuring to hear that you're you're going to be at least sort of looking under the hood a bit to see if there's something more we could do. And it'll be appreciated.
I'm glad you feel that way. And what we'll plan to do as part of the comments in September, when it's more of a touch base before we're done with the audit, but at that point in time, we've kind of committed internally that will be done with the IT portion of the audit. We will specifically share the results of the inquiries that we made around cybersecurity.
Great. Anybody else have any questions coming?
Can we have just Hector maybe comment a little bit on on the cyber thing just to, you know, provide some of the things that we that we've been being proactive?
Of course.
Yeah, thank you, Chancellor. You know, at the direction of the Chancellor, his request, we have we have brought in a couple of firms to come in and do a really an analysis of sort of our vulnerability and where we are and to see how we get into the core of. So if you look at the core in 10 layers, you see how deeply we get into the core of that. And that work is is an ongoing work and they're going to be making recommendations to the university connected to one of some of the things that we need to do to continue to to make that better. Obviously, as you stated, trustee Benson, we are, you know, this is an area where we constantly have been staying on top of it and constantly doing things to make sure that we're we're protecting ourselves. And obviously, we're also working in partnership with our state and city officials. You know, we've we're constantly communicating with them and getting their sort of help connected to any threats that we have as a university. And happy to come to this committee and present some of those findings when we get them.
That'll be great. Anybody else?
Yeah, Professor Benton, it's Richard White. I also want to remind you that as part of the full plan, the the committee and the Board of Trustees voted for the internal audit plan that addressed specifically, and I think there were either your question and one of the other ones, on our information and technology security policy compliance as part of our internal audit plan and our student administration and financial aid testing. So along with the exterior. So along with the exterior testing from Grant Thornton, interior-wise, we do have those audit plans. And we also are in the middle of our, through the Office of Risk Audit and Compliance, our CUNY cybersecurity risk assessment that's separate and apart from the outside. So there's extensive testing, as EBC Batista and the Chancellor mentioned. There's external testing, there's internal testing, there are outside consultants that are brought in. We're all constantly communicating.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else going once? All right, let's now move. Well, I now move for the approval of Policy Item 1B1. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will now vote. Please only respond if you would like to abstain or oppose. The vote has passed unanimously. With no more items on the agenda, I now move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anyone oppose? All right, that'll be it. Thank you so much. The meeting.
Thanks, everybody.